Let us pray. Most gracious and all wise God, we stand this evening to say thank you. It is you that keeps making, who keeps making a way time and time again. It is you alone who are worthy of the honor, glory, and praise. Father, our country and our world need you right now. I ask that you restore peace where there is violence. Restore humanity where it has been lost and restore love where there is hatred. When we seek to live your word, all great things work together for your good. As we are here tonight to do the people's work, let us remember that we are to do unto others as you have done unto us. It's not about organizations, plans, strategies, or even people, but it's about people motivating others to get the job done. So let us be centered in your name. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. This time I'll call on our Rutherford County Clerk Lisa Crowell to call the roll. Lisa?
Mr. Oliver?
Present.
Commissioner Piercey?
Here.
Commissioner Rather?
Here.
Commissioner P?
Here.
Commissioner Davison?
Here.
Mr. Beverly?
Here.
Mr. Kush?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner James?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Anthony Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Paul Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Irvin?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Dodd?
Here.
Chairman Phillips?
Present.
Mr. McAdoo?
Here.
Mr. McMurray?
Here.
Mr. Gooch?
Here.
Mr. Serrano?
Yeah.
We have a quorum, 20 present. At this time, I would like to let you know of something. As you may have noticed this evening, Amy Wells, who works with us at the county clerk's office and is usually with us at our county commission meetings, is not here with us tonight. Amy's mother, Jana Rae Keen, passed away on Tuesday, October the 10th. I ask you to please keep Amy and her family in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Lisa, for that update. Those of you wondering, Commissioner Joshua James has been called to active duty. I think he's in Florida someplace on a training mission and will be gone this month. Hopefully, he'll be back with us the first of the month, but keep him in your thoughts as well. This time I'll call on our chairman pro tem, Trey Gooch, for the reading and approval of our minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, among others, have reviewed the minutes, find everything to be in order. A motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve our September meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. This time on our agenda, we have our public comments and we have, it looks like nine people signed up. First on our list is Lisa Kay. She's talking about our litter grant. I'll remind everyone that public comments are limited to three minutes, so keep your comments to under three minutes, if you would, please.
Lisa Kay, I'm the Public Information Officer for Rutherford County. Chairman, commissioners, everyone. Commissioners, you will see at your seats, there's a bag, a tote bag, and it's filled with items. It's filled with a tumbler and a T-shirt. And I'm still trying to get used to Tennessee weather, however, I will not get used to the trash that is strewn along the streets and the roadways and so forth. So, the Rutherford County Litter Crew, under the supervision of Lieutenant Jason Peralta, from September 1st through September 30th, collected 12,063 pounds of trash on county roads. They also collected 746 bags of trash on state routes. So Lieutenant Peralta said that the amount varies month to month depending on how much trash people throw out, and it costs the state of Tennessee more than $23 million a year on pickup and prevention education. So with some of the money that Rutherford County has received, we have purchased these items, and I've been out and about in the community, giving them to different people, and I am joining my efforts with the hundreds of other people that live in Tennessee to stop the litter. This is a very simple message, but what it doesn't say, if you read between the lines, is that littering is stupid and that it's not only an eyesore, but it impacts public safety. So please use these items, talk to the people in the community. We would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Andrew Trenchard is talking about Waste Away.
My name is Andrew Trenchard. I live in the Indian Hills neighborhood. My wife and I and our three kids, we recently moved to Murfreesboro in June. We've, we, when we were trying to locate a home here in the area, our realtor specifically had us avoid the area of Murfreesboro where the current dump is located because of the smell and because of all the problems in that area. In July, we had kids come around and come let us know about the Waste Away that was going on. We were very disappointed to hear about this. We had not heard anything from the city. The city has communicated nothing to us about what's going on. I've heard the city come in here and try and tell you that we have, but we've not been told about this. It's very frustrating. My background is in physics, okay? I have a material science background. I worked in renewable energy, okay, for my master's degree. And this facility that they're talking about here with Waste Away, this is not going to be what they're trying to tell us it's going to be. It's not going to work the way they're telling us it's going to work, okay? There's a facility down in Morrison, Tennessee, that is basically, that's, is going to be similar to this one. That facility has a total of 687 people living in that area compared to the 160,000-something people here in the Murfreesboro area. This is not, this is not a good representation of what we're looking at here. There are also no neighborhoods near the facility in Morrison, Tennessee. So basically, what they're asking us to do is an experiment on our children. They're expecting us to put this facility by our kids. This facility is less than 3,000 feet from my home, from where my children are, and they're asking us to put this facility less than a mile from little kids, and they're expecting that this is just going to, oh, we'll just see how this works. We've never done this before, but we're just going to see how this works. I've been to, since I've been here, this is my third committee meeting I've attended. The last subcommittee meeting that I was at last week or the week before, we all talked. There were a bunch of people came up here and talked, and we were basically ignored, and the thing just got pushed right back here. The last committee meeting I was in, you guys said that the whole idea was more outreach needs to be done to the community. None of that has been done since the last committee meeting. The things that you were asked for since the last committee, none of that happened. All that happened was they brought it into the subcommittee, subcommittee said, okay, blah, 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 whatever, and it just got pushed right back up to you guys to make the vote again. They're trying to push this forward, and it's wrong. It just doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Glendall. Topic is also Waste Away.
Yes, my name is Rick Glendall. I live in Ennsbrook, behind the Krogers on South Church. I've been receiving this literature against the Waste Away, the project at Butler Drive, and I attended a meeting in March on the city council meeting where this zoning was taking place. And I was hopping mad about this and didn't know anything about it, and after I attended that meeting, I came up with some follow-up questions and I sent to Mr. Gore, who responded, and I've changed my mind entirely about this. The use of a digester to break this trash down is a proven, you know, it's not maybe the company that has any experience with this, but digesters and waste is a common use. I'm an engineer, so I, I'm familiar with digest, and the factory next door also has a digester, so I'm pretty comfortable with that part of it at least. I also have a teacher, our daughter, that's a teacher at Walter Hill, adjacent to the landfill, and I go up there occasionally to read to the children, and that mountain is disgusting, and if you don't ever go up that way, don't, because it's just terrible. And we've left that for our ancestors, you know. People in the future is going to have to deal with this, and it's, it's just a terrible thing, and it's embarrassing, and what will our people in the future think of what we're doing today? And to expand that landfill is just, it's the wrong approach, and that it'll be there forever. Solid waste remains as solid waste, especially how they protect it there. This is not a long-term answer. I also have experience in air pollution, as my previous employer years ago made air pollution equipment. That was where I was exposed to small trash incinerating facilities where the trash was burnt, and I tested emissions from them. I also know of a large facility that burned entire city's trash, and it was very complex and very, had the most modern equipment at the time. They're no longer there, as they couldn't control the gases emissions from, from the burning of this trash. You know, you can imagine with plastics and everything else. So solid waste becomes air pollution, so that, that is not a long-term answer. So what do we do? And I feel that the city has done their homework and come up with environmentally friendly long-term solution. Although you say it's not proven, digesting of waste is, maybe not in a municipal setting, but I feel that we should support this as it is a better, better long-term. Is it the answer to all? Then no. So we should support the digesting and recycling of our waste, as long as it's our own and not shipped in from afar. I'm totally against bringing in a lot of trash from out of state, et cetera, which they now do at the landfill, I believe. I understand that not everything is figured out, but, but supporting this option going forward, and I will continue to monitor this progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Glendall. Susan Allen, solid waste.
My name is Susan Allen. I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro. For about the last seven years, Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance members have been following the county's efforts to find alternative ways to dispose of our trash because of the impending closure of Middle Point. We've educated ourselves by attending Central Tennessee Region Solid Waste Planning Board meetings and every Public Works Committee meeting for years, and watched the many presentations by companies who claimed to be able to divert garbage from a landfill into some useful commodity, be it jet fuel or building materials. We toured the Waste Away plant in Morrison and witnessed the process of turning household garbage, think diapers, plastics, household, kitchen waste, into sterile stuff, in sterile fluff, in their fully enclosed building. It's truly an amazing process, and we could detect no odor from outside the building. We've learned a lot. Landfills, no matter how efficiently they may claim to be run, are not a solution for the future. We know neither the county or the city of Murfreesboro want out-of-region trash coming here, and both governments are making efforts to provide us with safe alternatives. Knowing how Murfreesboro has fought hard to protect residents near the landfill, I believe their plans for the Butler Drive site will not impact the environment or the health and safety of residents who live near this heavy industrial zone. They want to solve the problem, not create a new one. It's my understanding that in order for Murfreesboro to operate a new solid waste processing facility, they must demonstrate to the satisfaction of the Commissioner of TDEC that it will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or the environment, and that all engineering requirements be met. The protections are in place. The regulations must be met. For the purposes of the Jackson Law, please approve the resolution for the use of the Butler Drive property for a solid waste processing facility. Let TDEC take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Meredith Kirmichael. Also, city resolution.
My name's Meredith Kirmichael. I live on Twin Oak Drive in Murfreesboro. I would just like to speak about a point that doesn't get as much attention, and it's important to consider, to make residents aware of. Those who are unaware of this key point will say things such as, we've always had a landfill, it's easy, it's free, and besides, our garbage has to go somewhere, so let's just keep dumping. But when people say these things, they don't realize that back in the 80s and 90s, the Tennessee Central, the General Assembly passed acts that made it a state, not a city or a county, a state priority to reduce waste going into incinerators and landfills. Additionally, the state called for regional solid waste boards to be created and gave them obligations and authority to carry out those very tasks. Rutherford County's Regional Board has written and approved a plan that's specific for our region, so as mandated by the state, our Regional Board and county have to prioritize actions such as increasing recycling and diversion opportunities and reducing the amount of trash that goes into the landfill. Middle Point has been a stumbling block, preventing us from achieving these goals for years. When we say we cannot keep burying all the trash, it's not just a preference, it's a statutory requirement that we are obligated to work towards. Part of our Regional Board's plan to fulfill its obligation has been to implement an integrated solid waste program and restrict, restrict it to just the four counties in the region. Now that this has become apparent, that a landfill expansion is not in line with these goals and will not be approved, now is when Middle Point is saying they just would like to build an integrated solid waste management plan. However, they still refuse to restrict it to just Rutherford or regional trash, and when asked, they will admit that their integrated plan still includes burying waste, lots of it, coming from multiple counties outside of ours. Not only is this out of line with the goal of our regional plan, but it will make it extremely difficult for us to ever achieve the goals set by the state. Republic is a private company looking for bottom-line profits, not, not there to help us fulfill our statutory requirements. They don't want to limit the amount of trash coming in, it's not good for their business, but it's what's required of our county going forward, so please vote yes on the city's resolution. It is more in line with state and regional goals of reducing waste going into the landfill.
Thank you. Cynthia Allen, Waste Away.
First, let me say I'm so encouraged to see a full house. We've got a lot of people here, and it's always good when we see our citizens get involved. I know I harass half of you guys, talking and asking you many, many questions over the years, so I'm always encouraged to see people come out. Most of the topics that I had and wanted to cover have been mentioned already, but I did want to just say, one, I'm Cynthia Allen. I'm a resident here. I'm in Commissioner Harris's district, and I live on the north side, not too far, just south of the landfill, so I have been impacted for years. In addition to that, I'm currently the president of the Stone's River Watershed Association, so water protections and land resource protections has been a goal of mine. It's the work that I do. I'm in environmental, so I sat here in 2018, following this for the last five years, and three mayors ago, just like Susan Allen and some of the people that are here tonight, and we have followed this very, very closely. We've asked a lot of our commissioners a lot of questions. We've showed up to the central board meetings, so there's been a lot of work that has gone into this. I just wanted to say that I am here in support of this, because I know the work that has gone in trying to find the solutions for our county. We toured the facility, many of us, with these community meetings. We did tour the Morrison facility, and I remember in 2018, sitting here, and the solutions that the consultant, so just to take you back a little bit, in 2018, we had a consultant work with our solid waste authority and with our commissioners to try and find these solutions. And like I said, that was three mayors ago and five years plus, and so the options that come out of that was to do nothing, let the landfill continue until it ran out, which was not a good idea. I'm glad our, our leaders didn't decide to follow that. Expand Middle Point 2.0, and that was voted unanimously, for those that don't remember. It was a unanimous decision to not expand that landfill, and we were very supportive of that. Me, also, I know I don't have a lot of time, but that's the headwaters of our resource water that we all get our water from, so I do know that there's been a lot of thought that's gone into the environmental protections here. I know the work that the city does, they're responsible for protecting the water resources. I have the utmost faith that they'll continue to protect the citizens, being as that is their responsibility. I don't think they're going to try and put something in place that isn't going to benefit us. Second, according to the plan Rutherford, the past population has increased by 700 new residents per month since 2010, so if you calculate that, that's 8,400 new residents a year, if those numbers are accurate, and that's 109,200 residents just since that time. So the future predictions are at 500,000. We don't have time. That is, I know, one more second. That, you know, we have to make a decision. The expected closure is 2027. I know the work that the city has put into this, they've had, they've got my appreciation that they've been very diligently trying to find solutions for this. Not only is this a transfer station location on the south side, since you guys are looking at the north side, but it also gives us the leverage that we need to continue to grow and adapt as, as technology and that changes. So again, I'm thankful for this. I think this gives us the most forward-thinking plan that we have on the table to date, and because of the timing, I ask you to vote in support, and let's continue to move forward on this. Thank you.
Topic is also Waste Away.
My name's Maria Locascio. I'm a resident of Rutherford County, and I've been here for over 30 years. Without mentioning all of the concerns that we've heard at past meetings, I'd like to talk to you about something that you may not have heard. The last time that I was in this room to speak, there were several others here at that time, and the line was wrapped around the perimeter of the room. We were here to discuss a company who had moved into a residential area, operating a pressure washing business. We had no ill intent or disrespect for this company or the owner, but simply did not want an industrial company in our residential community. We were concerned about the contamination of water of the little stream that runs behind these homes with the runoff of the business that was washing out his 55-gallon drums of solution after his day of work. We were also concerned about traffic up and down Red Mile Road. I live in Nelson Downs. Much the same of what you've heard in other meetings. The city and the county turned a blind eye and a deaf ear to us. This company continues to operate today as a pressure washing business in Nelson Downs' Cross Creek Residential Community. A few months ago, my friend and I were walking in the neighborhood, and we came across some city workers on Red Mile Road. That's pretty unusual, so we stopped and asked them what was going on. They were very forthcoming with their information. They said they were collecting water samples from the stream that runs behind those homes because the water has been contaminated. There's algae growing on the, this is what they said, there's algae growing on the top of the water that they've never seen before. I'm not here to blame anyone, and I can't point any fingers, but there are still residents that are also dumping things into that stream. The ecological system of that water source has been tampered with and it's ruined. The reason I tell you this is because I feel as though Waste Away is going to be the same thing, only on a much larger scale. Like everyone else here, I agree that something needs to be done with our trash, and we need a solution, but the Waste Away treatment is not the solution. And I must ask, and I know, I know I won't get the answers, but where are the representatives from Waste Away? Why aren't they here to calm our fears and answer our concerns? And why are there facilities, Waste Away facilities, that are not operating at this We need answers as a community, and I'm pleading with you, please don't put Waste Away in our backyards. Thank you.
Thank you. Samantha Cantrell. Also Waste Away.
Hello. My name is Samantha Cantrell. I live in, at Aurora Circle off of Joby Jackson, so I'm very close, about a mile and a quarter is the butterflies from this proposed biogas facility. I was here last month from the commission, asked the planning committee to take a closer look at the resolution the city is asking the county to sign. I have read through the TDEC application that the city has drafted for this permit. I am hoping that the commission has also read that TDEC application. I remain unconvinced that the city adequately advertised public hearings on this plan, and I remain unconvinced of their claim in the TDEC application that this plan will increase property values in the neighborhood, my neighborhood, because of a sewer line that's being laid. So the, the, TDEC, TDEC application requires them to address property values, and their answer to that question is that a sewer line's being laid, so property values will increase. I don't, I don't find that convincing. I'm concerned about the volume of trash. On the front page of the TDEC application, it says 400 tons of trash per day, and I'm not opposed to clean energy being generated from trash. I'm concerned about how this particular location was chosen, and I don't feel like it was adequately disclosed to the public about the location and why it was selected. It's, it's in my neighborhood, and I, I want to know more about how that location was selected. So I, I do know that the commission did ask the, the planning committee to address that issue, like how the public hearings were advertised, because I feel like I didn't get very much information about this until more recently. Thank you.
Patty Kenny. It's safety for the digester.
I live in Indian Hills subdivision, and I'm one of the closest homes to this proposed site. Like the other lady said, I found out two days before the first meeting about this, and I was there, and I just, I don't understand how all of this has gone so fast and nobody really has known about it. really has known about all the different aspects about it. We never imagined that there'd be a waste treatment behind our house when we purchased it in 2008. You know, what would you think about if they put that behind your homes? We were told at the last commission meeting that there was going to be a transfer station there, whether or not the digester was put in or not. I've been to all the meetings since, I believe it was October. The first meeting that I went to, which the two days before I found out about, they did rezone the property, and there was approval to start the possible planning of it, but I don't remember anybody ever voting on the transfer station. I would have remembered if they were going to put a trash facility right behind my house. I did some research on digesters. If they're so safe, why am I finding so many articles about them being, having problems? In a 2021 article from Baker Engineering, they state that to cite the many benefits and solutions that RNG, renewable natural gas, provides, hazards are still present, and because RNG is relatively new technology, these hazards aren't commonly known. Most RNG plants are small and not covered under OSHA, which is required if the facility contains 10,000 pounds or more of flammable gas or liquid. However, when dealing with the flammable gas or toxic materials, it's important to recognize the potential hazards associated. Some of these are, there could be an explosion in the anaerobic digester, an overpressure of vacuum in the waste AD, or an explosion in the enclosed compressor building. We've all heard about so many different things that have just happened, explosions, the town in Pennsylvania. I mean, do we want this in our backyard? There are thousands of families that live around this site. We all agree that something needs to be done, but I don't think this is the site. It needs to be further away from residential areas. And I'd like to know when the facility, the transfer station, was actually approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This concludes our public comment session, and I would like to thank everyone for your participation in that process tonight. It's 6:30, time for our public hearings, and I'll call on our planning director, Doug
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doug Demossi, county planning director. We have four rezoning applications for your consideration tonight. The first is by Mr. Damian Baker. This is located at 6607 Lebanon Pike. The existing zoning is residential medium density, or RM. The proposed zoning is commercial general. The size of the entire property is six acres. They're only looking to zone about an acre and a quarter of that. What they would like to do is zone this property to commercial services to provide space to build a warehouse and store trucks, and a small office space and outdoor inventory storage for their existing business, which is actually located right to the north at 6817 Lebanon Pike. The acquisition of this parcel will allow him more space to expand his business. There is a concept plan that has been included with your agenda packets. I will say, as I say with all concept plans, this is not binding, but it does give you an idea of the direction they would like to go with their application. Access to the property would be along Lebanon Pike, as shown on the concept plan. Any new and improved access points would need to be approved through TDOT, as this is a federal slash state road. An engineered site plan would also be required prior to the development of the site, should this application be approved, and this would have to demonstrate compliance with all of our access and parking requirements. Landscaping and buffering would also be required between commercially and residentially zoned properties, which would be on the southern and western side. The eastern side would not require any buffering because it is the right-of-way of Lebanon Pike, and the property to the north is already zoned commercially. The zoning ordinance you see on the concept plan, that he provides a chain link fence. There are no provisions for screened chain link fences, so they'll have to amend that prior to the application of the site plan. But at the same time, like I said, that would have to come through our office. That'll have to go through Planning Commission for review, and it will have to meet our standards, as well as our performance standards for noise, dust, et cetera. There were some questions from the Planning Commission about how long the existing business had been located on the property, which the applicant answered, about four years. Following the public hearing, which no one spoke, the Planning Commission did make a motion to recommend approval by a unanimous vote. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Seeing none, we're ready for our public hearing. I'll declare a public hearing open for item REZ 23-015, Damian Baker. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Steve Piercy.
Chairman Phillips, I've had no contact from anyone that is against this. I have visited with the owner of the business that is wishing to expand, plus the head of the church, which is right adjacent to it. I feel like this will be an improvement for his business. I will move for its approval with staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve item REZ 23-015, Damian Baker. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Our second request is by Abdul Abu Zara, and I apologize if I'm not saying that correctly, located along Veals Road. The property is landlocked. It does have a Veals Road address, but as I've explained in a moment, access is actually off of Mount Herman Road. The proposed, excuse me, the existing zoning is residential medium density, RM. The proposed zoning is light industrial, and the entire site is about 8.7 acres in size. This is the result of a zoning enforcement action that was brought against this particular property. The applicant does own the business immediately adjacent to the east, which is located at 1456 Mount Herman Road. It's a salvage business. The applicant would like to rezone the subject property to light industrial, which can provide more space for him to store and operable vehicles. Now, when you look at the aerial photos, you'll see that the cars are already being stored on the property. For reasons unknown to staff, the business expanded its storage footprint onto adjacent property somewhere between 2015 and 2016, based on older aerial photos. Now, salvage operations are classified as scrap operations, according to our zoning ordinance, which they're allowed by right in the heavy industrial zone, but only by special exception in the light industrial zone. So we, as staff, are not comfortable with recommending heavy industrial on the site just because of the range of uses that go along with heavy industrial. So we did recommend, instructed the applicant, if he did make an application, to request light industrial, or LI. The applicant is aware that should this application be approved, this isn't the final decision as far as his business. This only approves the zoning. He would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the special exception to the business. Access to the property, as I explained a moment ago, is actually through the property at Mount Herman Road. So any new and improved access points would have to be approved through the county's highway department. It's our understanding that that will remain unchanged. Of course, an engineered plan would have to be submitted to our office for our review for any expansion. The landscaping and performance standards, again, would also apply. Any buffering required between industrial and residential properties required to be a type III, which is our strongest buffer, as opposed to a type II or a type I. Again, the site plan would have to be submitted for us to make sure that that is being done properly. We did clarify during the public hearing on this particular request that this was a result of a zoning enforcement issue, and explained the zoning enforcement process to those who had asked. There were also some questions about buffering and ownership of the property. During the public hearing, there were questions asked from a property owner, I believe, to the south, that he had some concerns that they were going to start accessing his property, which we told him that, you know, he would have to grant permission for something like that. There was also some concerns raised by other folks that spoke regarding operating by the rules that are already in place, vermin in the area, chemicals in the groundwater, or water quality issues, and also traffic along Mount Herman Road. Someone also raised a concern about Murfreesboro Street becoming an access point to this particular project. Following the public hearing, questions were asked about how long the subject property had been in violation. Again, we explained it looked like it started between 2015 and 2016, and also any TDEC inspections. Following brief discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend denial of this project by a unanimous vote. It's unusual to see projects that are recommended for denial by the Planning Commission to come forward to the full county commission like this one is. They do have that right to come forward, but I did want to make sure that everyone knew that this was a unanimous recommendation for denial. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Demossi. Commissioner Raed.
Mr. Chairman, I do like to just address the commissioners to the fact that I am chairman of the Planning Commission, and just to remind you on the fact that that was an 11 to 0 denial by the Planning Commission. I'm speaking totally for the Planning Commission. Why we did that? Due to the fact that it was brought to the Planning Commission due to zoning violations. It had been in the process for over six to eight years, this happening. In other words, they were expanding over on property that wasn't even zoned for this. It was moving towards Murfreesboro Street. The residents were concerned, and it was going towards a residential area for this type of salvage yard that just really didn't fit into the subject area. And this is the reasoning that was given for the denial, and I just wanted to bring that to the commission's attention.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for staff? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing open for REZ 23-016, Abdul Abzabara. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Chantel Serino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last time I attended a planning meeting, and also the, got several people denied, not approved, so I proposed for, to deny.
We have a motion to deny and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to deny carries. Thank you. REZ 23-016 has been denied. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our third application is by NG Elum LLC, located along Elum Road. The existing zoning is office professional. Proposed zoning is employment and activity center, and the size of the property is approximately 11 acres. This property was zoned entirely to office professional back in 2021. At the time, there was a portion still zoned residential and a small portion that was zoned office. The proposed use at that time was for a self-storage facility, although the primary use, as it turned out after the application had been approved, the applicant was more looking towards something on the lines of boat and RV storage, which is not a permitted use in the office professional district. The applicant now proposes to rezone this property to what's called Employment and Activity Center, or EAC, for trailer parking and building for maintenance, similar to some other developments that we've looked at off of Eps Mill Road and Miller Lane. A concept plan has been included with your agenda packets. During the pre-application meeting, the applicant's representative did ask about applying for the EAC district. This is a district that was created when we went through our comprehensive plan process about 10-plus years ago, and then updated our zoning ordinance. This zone actually was created to go along with the employment and activity centers, hence the name, that were identified in the plan. Now, this particular area is not identified as such under our comprehensive plan. However, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that says it just can't be applied in other areas, and staff was okay with its application here due to the character of the area. It's heavy, it's primarily industrial area, it's near an interchange. This is the same characteristics that we see in other employment areas, so I just wanted to at least make the commission aware of that. Access to this property will be along a newly constructed extension of Distribution Drive, which is actually a Murfreesboro City Road. This road is planned to eventually extend all the way to Elum Road, providing an additional access onto Joby Jackson, further from the Interstate 24 interchange. We do have concerns about truck and trailer traffic entering or exiting along Elum Road in its current state, so the proposal was presented during the pre-application meeting to use this other road and not have any direct access onto Joby Jackson. By using this, access to the property will ultimately come again through Joby Jackson Parkway via Elum Farms Parkway, which is designed for larger truck traffic, plus it is a signalized intersection at Joby Jackson Parkway. As with any site plan, it would have to be engineered and submitted to our office for our review and also for a Planning Commission review as well. The applicant's also aware that there's going to have to be coordination with the city of Murfreesboro for the connection to Distribution Drive, again, since that is a city road. The EAC district allows for various buffer types depending on the proposed development. Industrial developments would require a type III buffer, similar to the one we were just talking about a moment ago. Buffering is not required adjacent to any existing industrial development, but again, an engineered site plan would bear that out, and we'd be able to look at that at that time. And of course, our performance standards would also apply. Planning commissioners did have some questions about access to the property, again, via Distribution Drive, and we reiterated that there would not be any access onto Elum Road. The applicant's representative did state and understood that further discussions would need to be had on the alignment of the Distribution Drive extension. There were also some questions from the Planning Commission about whether or not this would be on sewer or septic, and we answered it would be on septic. And some, the concept plan does show some wetland issues that may affect site design, but those are shown, and we are aware of those. So following the public hearing, again, nobody spoke on that, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the application by a unanimous vote, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item REZ 23-017, NG Elum. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Chantel Serino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to the approve with staff comment.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve REZ 23-017, NG Elum is approved. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is our final application tonight for your consideration. This is by Swanson Development LLC. It's located along Bradyville Pike. Existing zoning is residential medium density, and the proposed zoning is commercial services. The entire tract is 122 acres, but they're only looking for a little shade over five acres for the rezoning. The subject property was zoned back in 2021 for the Fox Camp planned development. There is a portion of this property, I'm sorry, the portion of this property under consideration, which is part of the parent tract, was not included with that at the time. The applicant's now looking to zone this to commercial services, as I stated a moment ago. The applicant has provided a zoning diagram for your reference. The no specific uses have been identified, although I will get into what the applicant, his vision is for that particular property. Access to this property could either be along Bradyville Pike or within the internal road network of Fox Camp Retreat. The original traffic study for Fox Camp has not been updated, however, whenever we get a better idea of what the uses are that they're proposing, staff can require a new study to be updated, to be sent to our office for us to review, again, once the uses are determined. Any new or improved access points along Bradyville Pike would have to be approved by TDOT because that is a state road. Any connections onto the internal network, of course, could be approved by the Rutherford County Highway Department. And as with any development that we see, an engineered site plan would be required of this site should this application be approved. Type II buffer would be required between commercially and residentially zoned properties. They are showing screening and buffering on all sides, except for those that are but the right-of-way. Again, the engineered site plan would show that, and our performance standards would also apply. The Planning Commission did have some questions about the proximity of other commercial or non-residential zoning in the area. There was also a question about the progress of the Fox Camp Retreat development. They have held a pre-application meeting for the single-family portion, and we're getting ready to consider a site plan for the multifamily. There was a small multifamily element with this as well, but construction hasn't begun at this time. Some of the commissioners felt that commercial zoning in the area could be appropriate, based on comments made in the staff report. The applicant's representative also said that proposed uses would be more neighborhood scale, although there weren't any proposed uses, but some of the potential businesses he could foresee would be something like contractors' offices, ATV repair shops, a small restaurant, maybe a daycare, a small church, veterinarian, something to that effect. During the public hearing, there were some concerns raised by those in the area about development, about of this tract, existing commercial uses not being that far from the area, uncertainties about the use of the property was mentioned, increases in traffic and possibly crime. After hearing those comments, the staff outlined various uses that are allowed in commercial services, and following discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Seeing no one, I'll declare a public hearing open for item REZ 23-020, Swanson Development. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Once again, Commissioner Chantos Serena.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm also move to approve with this step comment.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion, anyone against? A motion to approve carries. Item REZ 23-020 Swanson Development has been approved. Mr. Demasi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief announcement on our Plan Rutherford, our comprehensive plan update, public meetings that we've had. We've had three so far. Been very encouraged by the attendance that we've received and also the questions and the activity and just the, all the, just the overall ideas and everything coming out of it, so we've been very encouraged with that. I just want to let everybody know that there is one more. It'll be this coming Monday. It's at 5:30. It'll be at Rockvale High School. Will be in the library, so hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demasi. This time, we'll get back to our agenda item, item F, Elections and Confirmations. I'll call on our steering vice chairman, Pettis Reed. Also the chairman of public safety and also the chairman of our planning commission. I don't know what to call you anymore, Mr. Reed, but right now, I'll call you the steering vice chairman. How's that?
Just call me whatever you wish. You're the chairman. Elections and confirmations, item one. Commissioners, we're looking at to elect notaries. You have received listings of the notaries, and you may also find those on your iPad. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
I move.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any questions? All those in favor to approve the list of notaries, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Item two, steering would like to announce a vacancy on the Rutherford County Library Board to fill a retiring member's seat, term to expire June 2025. Item three, steering would like to announce a vacancy on the Code Enforcement, Adjustments and Appeals Board. This will be a three-year term running from September 2023 until September 2026. Item four, steering wishes to confirm Carol Hughes to Historic Courthouse Museum Board of Trustees. This is a replacement for the retirement of a representative from the Rutherford County Historical Society. Ms. Hughes is an officer of the County Historical Society, making her eligible for this replacement. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second to confirm Carol Hughes to the Historic Courthouse Museum Board of Trustees. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Ms. Hughes has been confirmed.
Item five, steering also would like to confirm the reappointment of James Patrick Hale to the Board of Zoning Appeals, BZA. This is a five-year term, October 2023 through October 2028. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to confirm the reappointment of Mr. Hale to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to confirm Mr. Hale has been approved.
Item six, we also wish to confirm the reappointment of Joanna Medlin to the Beer Board. This is a three-year term, October 2023 through October 2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Ms. Medlin to the Beer Board. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to confirm Ms. Medlin has been approved.
Item seven, steering wishes to confirm Misty Foy to the Beer Board. This is a three-year term, October 2023 through October 2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second to confirm Ms. Foy to the Beer Board. All, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to confirm Ms. Foy has been approved.
Item eight, steering would like to confirm Dre Curtis, this Beer Board alternate. This is a three-year term, October 2023 through October 2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Mr. Curtis to the Beer Board. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to confirm Mr. Curtis has been approved.
Item nine, steering wishes to confirm Rick Hall to the Industrial Development Board, IDB, to fill a vacancy for a retiring member's seat. Term expires August 2029. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a, we have a motion and a second to confirm Mr. Hall to the IDB vacancy. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Mr. Hall has been confirmed.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Chairman Reed. Item G, resolution to approve our consent agenda. I'll call on our chairman, Pro Tim Treguch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The eight items on the consent agenda are appropriate, and my motion is to approve the consent.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? For this item will be on the board. If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
20 yes.
Motion passes. Item J, we're getting into our standing committees. Item J1, Budget Finance and Investment Committee, Chairman Robert P.
Our first resolution has got to do with prior year projects from our school board that we have already voted on and approved and were not finished and were carried over into this year. Resolution be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Educational Capital Projects Fund be amended according to the schedule attached. Hereunto is Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim, resolved this 12th day of October 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would like to mention, of course, the paperwork attached should be on your iPads, but this is a total of $13,577,898.
Any other discussion? For this will be on the board. If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
20 yes.
Item J1A, passes.
Budget item B, this is pretty well self-explanatory, but we'll go ahead and read it. Whereas the Property Tax Freeze Act is a program established by the state of Tennessee to assist senior citizens by freezing their property taxes to protect them from future increases in tax rates or increases to their property assessments as set forth in Tennessee Code annotated 67-5-705. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted the program in August of 2008, and whereas the program provided a much-needed relief to senior citizens on fixed incomes who may struggle to keep up with rising property tax burdens, particularly in the face of increasing property values. And whereas the current income limit for the program as described in Tennessee Code annotated 67-5-705 F3A triple I and applied in Rutherford County is $47,570, which does not reflect the financial circumstances and economic realities that many senior citizens face in Rutherford County due to the impact of inflation since the program was enacted. And whereas the Tennessee General Assembly recently passed SBO 871, which was signed by Governor Lee on April 28, 2023, which allows county legislative bodies to raise the income limits for the Property Tax Freeze Act to $60,000 of annual income by duly passed resolution. And whereas SBO 871 enacted and recorded as Chapter 271 of the Public Acts of 2023 was effective July 1, 2023, and applies to tax years beginning on or after that date. And whereas the rising, raising the limit to $60,000 of annual income would allow more senior citizens to qualify for the tax-free benefits. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners hereby adopt the income limit of $60,000 described in Tennessee Code annotated 67-5-705 F3A triple I. Be it further resolved, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners request the Rutherford County trustee implement this change in accordance with state law and new rules promulgated by the applicable state authority. Excuse me. Be it therefore resolved that the Rutherford County Clerk is requested to file a copy of this resolution with the Tennessee Comp Trailer, Comp Controller of the Treasury Division of Property Assessments and any other authorities needed to put this resolution into effect, resolved this 12th day of October 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. For this will be on the board. If you would, commissioners, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
20 yes.
Motion passes.
Budget item C, this is actually a program that the state in the past has administrated, and they are passing that on to us. And my opinion, this happens to be an unfunded mandate, but it's not necessarily something we have a lot of control over. But resolution, whereas the state of Tennessee has presented Rutherford County with a letter of agreement for a directive appropriation grant related to funding for qualifying alternative electronic monitoring fund devices utilized by persons who have been found to be indigent pursuant to the process described in TCA 5510-419. And whereas the grant is in the amount of $58,225. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute a letter of agreement with the state of Tennessee, a copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein as by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim, to accept funding in the amount of $58,225 to be used for qualifying alternative electronic monitoring fund devices utilized by persons who have been found to be indigent pursuant to the process described in TCA And be it further resolved with the general fund to be amended as follows, to recognize the grant revenue and appropriate funds for the qualifying alternative electronic monitoring fund devices, a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $58,225, an increase in revenue from EMIF other state grants of $58,225, and increased expenditures for contracts with private agencies of $116,450. Resolve this 12th day of October 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second. Once again, commissioners, for this will be on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
20 yes.
Item J1C, passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes budget's business tonight. However, I'll mention that our next meeting, budget meeting, will be November the 9.
Thank you, Chairman P. Item J2, Public Safety Committee, Chairman Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, our next meeting will be October the 23rd at 5:30 here in these chambers. But Mr. Chairman, since we're coming up on a time of the year when there are dangers dealing with Halloween and things of that type, I'd like to yield my time to my vice chairman, Mr. Commissioner Mike Rather, who was very instrumental in doing a very important thing dealing with public safety two years ago, and I'd like to yield my time to my vice chairman.
Commissioner Rather.
In 2020, Nate Isbell was on Passaport Road Halloween night and got 13-years-old and got hit by a car and killed. I met with his mother, Janice Perkins, within about a week. We don't make laws, so we can't change the speed limit or put up speed bumps or whatever. I talked with so many people, county attorney, highway department, just all over, trying to figure out what to do. So the best we could do is the commission. Was put this resolution together and bring awareness to speeding. Should have been in general because people speed everywhere, but especially on Halloween night. Nate or Janice and her husband brought me statistics that showed at 35 miles an hour, this what happens if you get hit at 25, at 20. So we limped it, I believe, to 25 miles an hour. And on Halloween, go 25. I had people pass me doing 90, and when I get to the next red light, I'm right behind them and I'm doing 40. You don't get anywhere any faster. You're burning more gas, spending more money, just slow down or leave earlier. So especially on Halloween night, slow your roll, like I said three years ago. Slow your roll. There are kids out there, and if you care anything about kids, and I said this three years ago, if you care about children, slow down Halloween night, especially. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rather. I believe that's 25 miles an hour in residential subdivisions is the recommendation. Thank you. Duly noted. Item J3, Health and Education Committee, Chairman Phil Dodd.
Thank you, Chairman. Our next meeting is Tuesday, October 24, 2023 at 5:30. I did want to just comment on one item that was in our minutes from last month. Director Byron Crumbie spoke to us from the Health Department, and it just floored me that after so many decades of mental health being in the closet, mental health being something we swept away, the Rutherford County Health Department now has mental health first aid training available. And so I just want to commend our department for bringing that, that illness and that first aid to the forefront. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Dodd. Also, to add to that, I believe the Health Department has our flu shots and our COVID vaccine or our boosters, both available. Up to it. Item J4, Property Management. Item J4, Property Management, Chairman Allen McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next meeting will be October 26 at 5:30 PM. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll skip down to Item J6, Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee, Chairman Craig Harris.
Our next meeting would be November 6 at 5:30. And I also like to thank Vice Chair Pettis Reed for covering for me while I was on vacation, and he did a great job. Thank you.
Item J5, Public Works and Planning Committee, Chairman Anthony Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd say first, our next Public Works meeting will be November 7 at 5:30. Tonight, we bring a resolution regarding Murfreesboro Qualified Biogas Project. But before I read the resolution, if there's no objections, I'd like to call Darren Gore from the City of Murfreesboro up to present.
Any objection?
Thank you, Chairman Johnson, and thank you, commissioners, for having me before you this evening. I live at 2922 Chateau Court. That's in Indian Hills subdivision, about a mile from, as the crow flies, from this Butler Drive location. I grew up in Smyrna, moved there in 1974. 1987, I worked on the Smyrna Town Center hanging air conditioning duct. I wasn't very good at it, but what I could do, I could drive a three-speed transmission truck. And so I went multiple trips up and down Jefferson Pike, taking sheet rock and construction material to County Dump. Back then, in 87, you drove down into a hole, not this mountain that we have now. Went on to really become, in the last 30 years, work on water resources, drinking water, sanitation, sanitary sewer, trying to enhance our water resources of our community and give to our kids what we had. So I want to give those general comments, and I want to frame some more comments just to kind of give you, I know there's going to be discussion and questions, but the resolution before you this evening is a necessary linchpin for Murfreesboro to start solving several problems. And our proposed solution would involve eliminating hundreds of trash hauling trucks going to Middle Point landfill, bringing in Davidson County trash. It would eliminate leachate outbreaks and discharges into the East Fork Stones River, eliminate air quality issues, eliminate noxious odor emissions, eliminate trash, mud, and debris from our roadways, and eliminate future road maintenance costs. So the city's not interested in transferring all those problems that we have on the north side of town and transferring those to the south side of town. Matter of fact, we are diligently working to ensure that doesn't happen by spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on a lawsuit with Republic to stop Middle Point landfill from expanding. We spent millions of dollars on land and design to try to come up with an alternate solution. We attempted, we documented this solution in 2021. We had a 10-year solid waste management plan that was based on the 2018 GBB Vision document that the county and Murfreesboro and Smyrna and Laverne and Eagleville helped formulate. We updated that document in May of 2022 and May of 2023. Several commissioners were provided that draft update in April of 2022, and I've tried to reach out to most all of y'all, the new commissioners, to answer any questions or concerns. So say all that to say, the city's ultimate mission is to be good stewards of this community's natural resources and to advance and protect the public welfare. So I would just urge the commission to keep this overarching mission in mind when considering your vote on this item. I've got some slides that can show you the ease of ingress egress off of I-24, so trucks can get in and out easily, so they don't get on our local roads. I can show you proposed road improvements the city's going to make. I can show you the buffer between the golf course and CSX right-of-way, and then floodplain and floodway, that's a natural permanent buffer of over 1,500 feet between the residential area that I live in and this particular site. I can show you the heavy industrial corridor where other industries are actually located closer. So I've got those pictures. I'd be happy to go through them with you. I think I've sent those, most of those to you if you've reviewed it. But I just wanted you to understand that we're trying to solve a problem. We don't want to transfer this problem to the south side, and most of all, I don't want to transfer it to my neighborhood. I actually was the one instrumental in picking this location, and I did not consider it part of the neighborhood. And a lot of the public comment that goes out, we do a radius around properties, and the radius to get to Indian Hills is a pretty strong radius to get to. We will be having future public hearings. When we go before our planning commission, there will be a planning commission public hearing, and there will be a city council public hearing. And I've communicated with dozens of folks and answered emails and tried to do my best to be as open and transparent about this as possible. So with that, I can either show you some more, some pictures, or we can just ask questions, or we can ask for your vote.
Questions for Mr. Gore.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Beverly.
Thank you for the information. I just want some clarifying. Will any trash be coming into this facility from, that's manufactured or comes from out of Murfreesboro, any out-of-county trash?
We right now anticipate, and we're doing a survey, to try to get exclusive trash just inside of Rutherford County. We need 400 tons a day to make this a viable solution. There's somewhere just north of 1,000 tons of trash generated in Rutherford County. We need to secure where that trash is coming from. We are part of a central region solid waste board that has Warren, Coffey, and Cannon as part of that region. I don't necessarily want to exclude them. There's some trash that does come to Middle Point from Bedford as well, but we are, the vast majority comes from Davidson County, and we are not going to be taking any Davidson County trash, if that answers your question.
But Warren, Bedford, and which other county might be
Coffey.
contributing trash to the Waste Away facility?
Might be.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Oliver.
The question I have is, have you considered other locations?
No, ma'am. This site was so, if you look at the natural buffer between it and the residential areas, and you look at its proximity, so close, I mean, it's right off of the interchange, that was the ideal location to get trucks to use the interstate to come in off of the interstate for ingress, get back on the interstate for egress, and we had this large natural buffer between the residential areas. We could not identify another location that had those same attributes, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. Gore.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a resolution to read on this tonight, but first of all, I want to say that it's, I believe every commissioner received this letter. It's a letter of approval or support for this project, and this came from Shane McFarland, Mayor of Murfreesboro, Joe Carr, Mayor of Rutherford County, Mayor Esther Reed, Mayor of Smyrna, Jason Cole, Mayor of Laverne, Chad Lehman, Mayor of Eagleville. They're all in support of this project moving forward. I'll just read the last part of it. "We urge the county to support Murfreesboro advancing its alternative waste disposal solution as one means to address the solid waste needs of our entire county and cities respectfully, and signed by all the mayors." Bear with me, this is a little lengthy. Whereas the City of Murfreesboro City has represented to the county that on December 7, 2022, the city entered into an agreement with Waste Away LLC to design a qualified biogas property, the project, which consistent with the definition of such properties in Inflammation Reduction Act 28 U.S.C.A. 48 C7, will convert bio, will convert biomass into methane gas and will capture such gas for sale of productive use. And whereas the city has indicated that the project's objective is to produce renewable natural gas for sale for municipal solid waste, while at the same time diverting upwards of 90% of municipal solid waste collected by the city from landfills at the market competitive price. And whereas the city intends to have the project built on property owned by and located within the city at 2120 Butler Drive, and whereas the city has represented to the county that the project will include the following components, a material management station, a Waste Away SE3 manufacturing component, an anaerobic reactor biogas generation component, a renewable natural gas purification component, and a related facility support spaces. And whereas, based on the information provided to the county by the city, the project constitutes a solid waste processing facility subject to regulation by the Tennessee Department of Environmental and Conservation, TDEC, under the Tennessee Solid Waste Disposal Act, as amended and codified by Tennessee Code Annotated 68-211-101 ET, and the related implementing regulations adopted by TDEC, specifically Chapters 0400-11-01 of the Rules and Regulations of the State of Tennessee. And whereas pursuant to the Rule 040011-1-2, the project can be operated within the permit from TDEC. And whereas the city retained the engineering firm Griggs and Maloney to prepare the city's notification for permit for rule, permit application, in accordance with Rule 0400-11-0-02, a copy of said permit application being attached heretofore as Exhibit A. And whereas, because the city adopted the Jackson Law Tennessee Code Annotated 68-211-701, the Jackson Law, in December of 2016, and the county adopted the Jackson Law in November of 2005, TDEC will not evaluate the city's permit application unless and until both Murfreesboro City Council and the Rutherford County Commission have approved the use of the 2002-021 Butler Drive property for solid waste processing facility. And whereas Griggs and Maloney certifies the permit application meets the requirements set forth in Rule 040011-0102. And whereas, the project does not require any financial contribution from the county. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that based upon the representation and information provided to the city, sorry, by the city and the engineering firm of Griggs and Maloney in the city's permit application, it hereby approves the use of the 2120 Butler Drive property for the solid waste processing facility for the purpose of the Jackson Law Code Annotated 68-211-701 and Chapters 0400-11-01 of the Rules and Regulations of the State of Tennessee, subject to all of the City of Murfreesboro planning and engineering design requirements, approval of financing by the Murfreesboro City Council, and approval and permitted by TDEC. This being resolved 12th day of October 2023. I so move.
We have a motion and a second. Comments or questions? Seeing none for this, will be on the board.
Hopefully, this won't take too long. If you watched Public Works, I was the only one that voted no on this issue. The reason I voted no on this issue is because I think that this body should have a say on what trash is brought into this county and what is not brought into this county. Now, if we pass this, that's going to leave it up to Murfreesboro City to decide if they can't get their 400,000 tons, they're going to go outside of the county to do that. Now, I don't think that they want to do that, and I believe that. However, we have no assurances of that. And if we go ahead and vote this in as it is, and I'll ask our attorney what his opinion is, could we say, no, we don't want trash outside of Rutherford County? Now, I don't have a problem with trash coming out of the group that we're associated with, and that's Cannon, Warren, and Coffey. But anything past that, I think that this body should have veto power over allowing outside trash. This is what this is all about. That's what Darren just got up here and said. You know, unfortunately, I think the city council's meeting tonight, and, you know, I don't know whether they're going to discuss this or not, but for my support to go this, and I'm not against it, I applaud them for trying to do something besides just stick trash in the ground, turn your back on it, and forget about it. You know, I think some of this is a good idea. I don't think Waste Away is such a good idea, but the biogas, you know, has got some good things about it. But however, I want to ask our attorney first, and then I'm going to offer an amendment that we have veto power over trash coming outside this county. But before I do that, I want to ask our attorney, if this passes as it is, would we have a sudden?
Yeah. So the TDEC regulations, to my knowledge, doesn't allow for us to place any sort of limitations on that, Commissioner, but it also doesn't say that you can't. What I don't know, and I don't even know if the city knows, that if you were to place a restriction on that, say, to limit it to those counties within our solid waste region, and I think this, the city, Mr. Gore, mentioned something about Bedford County, but if we were to limit that, what I don't know, and what I don't know the city knows, is what TDEC's going to do with that. I don't know if they're going to consider that an approval by this body or not, and that's something I can't predict, and I'm not, I don't know.
So you can't predict if I put an amendment on this, this would stop this from going through?
I don't know what TDEC would say, would say to that. I do not. And if the city might have information in that regard, they might share it with you. But I, and also, one thing that was mentioned at the Public Works Committee meeting was that whether the city was going to, you know, be in agreement with limiting it to the four or to the solid waste region in Bedford County. And so if they're in agreement with that, TDEC might not have too big an issue with it.
Well, and then, in your opinion, if we vote this through, can we say, hey, Murfreesboro, we don't want trash from outside this county coming in? Or can they do that?
I think ultimately, it's going to be TDEC's call on it.
I'm asking you from this contract, you're saying it's TDEC.
I'm asking you from this contract, you're saying it's TDEC's call, not Rutherford Counties, not the City of Murfreesboro?
As currently written, this resolution, is that what you're asking about, as currently written? Yes, sir. So if you don't offer any amendment, and this resolution were to pass as written, there's no indication provided to TDEC that the county wants limitation on it. That makes sense.
So we have no limitation on this. If Murfreesboro City or future council decides they want to bring trash in from other counties, they can do that. Correct?
I believe so. I'm not, I don't know, I'm not aware of anything in the TDEC regulations that would allow us to do that.
Well, from what you said about this not being allowed to have an amendment, I won't make an amendment. But I'm telling you, the reason we're having this argument now, the reason we've got this problem with Republic, besides the stink that we're getting out of that, some of the other issues, is we don't have control over who's bringing trash in this county. And if you vote this in, you're giving it up.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a parliamentary inquiry? What would be the appropriate motion to send it back to Murfreesboro City to ask them to consider limiting it to these four, three or four counties to our region?
I have no idea.
If there are no other--
Sometimes I wish I could say that, too, but I don't have that luxury. I think, Commissioner, to your question, if that were going to be put forth, it would just be a motion to defer this to next month and a request to send it to, back to the city council with the request that they consider redoing their own resolution to place that requested limitation on the permit application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. That's an amendment to the motion.
Well, so, no, it's not, it's not a, it's not a motion to amend. You've got the resolution before the body. This is simply a motion to defer it to next month to allow what the commissioner has requested the City of Murfreesboro do. And so basically, the item is tabled till next month until we wait to see what the city does with it.
Vote on that motion.
That's right. And there would just be the one vote. If it passes, that's it for tonight, and it would be deferred till next month. If it doesn't pass, then you still have the pending resolution before the body.
Okay, everyone understand? Commissioner Dodd?
I do. Will there be discussion, a discussion on this?
Oh, yeah.
It's appropriate.
You have the floor.
As I said at Public Works, I think that this was crafted for the Jackson Law, to meet the Jackson Law standards, is my understanding. So I'm going to ask the, our attorney, is there another vehicle that perhaps Commissioner Irving and perhaps Commissioner P. would, could undertake? Could we pass any other resolution tonight to compel the city to get our permission for taking out of county trash? Can we, can we, and we may have to vote on that one first, but is there any other vehicle to give us control of where the trash comes from and not stop this very specific well-crafted resolution to address the Jackson Law? Is that a clear question?
I think so. I don't think there's anything that we can do to compel the city to do it. If this commission wants to signal the city to engage in negotiations for a separate inter-local agreement in that regard, it could do that. I don't know if the city has any incentive to do that, because I'm not so sure what they would be getting in return, other than maybe a positive vote to move this forward, if that were to make sense. But placing a limitation like this on the resolution as is could prove troublesome for them to get approval from TDEC. That's, that's just my anticipation, although if they agree to it, like I said, TDEC probably would have no issue with it. TDEC has, I think, interpreted these regulations to kind of place it, the onus on the local governing bodies that are most affected by it, at least at this preliminary level, which is what we're experiencing right now.
Thank you. My concern with the resolution, the motion to defer, for lack of a better term, is that I'm just back to, this was crafted for the purpose of the Jackson Law. So I guess there's nothing I can say without repeating the question, except to go back and for 10 years in Public Works, we've been addressing this issue, guys and ladies, and we've got these box of, box of solutions. Transfer station, waste energy, compost, bury. That's the only solutions. After a decade of work and extra work, we're finally starting to launch a solution. The city's undertaken with great risk, a solution. Tonight's resolution gives them permission to do the next step in due diligence, which may very well result in, this does not make financial sense, Waste Away will never come, it's just a transfer station. Same thing we're doing. If we need more trash in our transfer station, we may consider taking trash from Wilson County. We don't want them to come tell us we can't take trash from Wilson. I don't want to say we're overstepping our boundaries, because we're not, and Robert remembers how badly we were burned by the weak contract we had with BFI from 1980 something, Robert. So that's real heartburn. That's a real problem. The City of Murfreesboro is not an enemy. They're not an adversary. They're, as a matter of fact, they could choose to stop taking trash. They have no constitutional mandate to take trash. They could choose tomorrow to stop taking trash instead of being proactive, instead of being well-educated and promoting one of the four buckets that are the solution for waste management. And we would be left with their problem. So I'm disappointed that we're contaminating an avenue to a solution to let a sophisticated body pursue an alternative to burying waste. Let's let this resolution go through, and let's work on all of the interlocal agreements. They've been trying for years to work with us on this matter. We keep saying no, or else we're not passing it through the full committee. Tonight, we have a chance to start moving solid waste forward in a sophisticated 21st century method. And I trust the city, I trust Darren Gore specifically, and Craig Tyndall, and Shane McFarland, and others in the city, that we can do an interlocal agreement about all the other elements of solid waste in our near future. Don't block this resolution with other problems.
Mr. Gore, did you have a comment that you'd like to address specifically toward this, this motion?
Thank you. We did bring up an interlocal agreement, and I've gotten texts from the mayor, McFarland, that says, we will commit to not taking outside county trash per his comments. We don't want that. I'm not the one to close that door, however, because we are part of a central region, central region. I know we're going to need to do an interlocal agreement to some level, because there's going to be sewer required up on the northern transfer station site for the city to supply sewer to the county's transfer station. So there's going to have to be, there's going to have to be considerations by our city council to provide services to the county. And there's going to have to be a given take. If we both want to restrict what each other's taking in, that's, that's, the instrument is the interlocal agreement. This resolution really is just to let TDEC review our permit application. There are several other linchpins that have to be set. I can just give you my word that the county, that the city does not want outside county trash. We do need to have further agreements between us because of the sewer and the fire protection on the northern transfer station site. We can, if we want to limit each other's trash intake to the region or just the county, that is absolutely something, that's why I gave you my opening comments, is we're not trying to create another problem. We're trying to eliminate the trash that's going up into the northern part of the county and the northern part of the city. We're trying to minimize that and keep it as local as possible. I just can't commit that we wouldn't use, take the region trash. Our council can commit to that, and you can commit to similar constraints, if you will. And I would, I would really advise and recommend that an interlocal agreement be the vehicle under which those are done. Again, because there will be, there is a sewer, there is, I know that there's a sewer requirement on the northern transfer station site that we need to, we need to enter into an agreement with the county, if that makes sense.
Commissioner P.
Could we pass this contingent upon an interlocal agreement?
Yeah, so I think my answer is going to be somewhat similar, but I'll rephrase it. So I think you can do that. You could do that. What I, what I don't know is if that's going to hold up the city on their permit application, because they're going to want to take this resolution up there and show that they've got local government approval, and TDEC could say, well, you don't really have it because you don't have an interlocal agreement in place, et cetera. But to your, to direct answer your question, could you do that in this? You could. I just don't know the effect on their application to TDEC.
Well, almost 35, 40 years ago, when my father was standing right here, they basically would do a handshake agreement. They ended up with waste management, I mean, Republic over there on the river, yeah, Brown and Ferris. But I'd much rather, even though I don't disagree with, you know, Shane saying, hey, he's not open to this, but he doesn't control all the votes on that committee, I assume, on your council. That has to be voted for. Now, my, my main question is, will it hurt the city's endeavor to do this, to wait for 30 days for you to take this to the, to the city council and say, hey, all of, all we want is to have veto power on not bringing trash in outside. And we don't, I don't mind working with an interlocal agreement, and I'm not trying to hurt you, and I'm not trying to stop this. I'm just wanting the ability to say no. I can't make it any clearer than that.
Well, I don't know exactly how to answer you, other than it does hurt us to delay. It's going to take at least 90 days to get the TDEC permit. So it's going to be, it's already going to be the tail. Even though we're trying to set the linchpin first, it's going to be the last one that actually gets set. We're going to be able to accomplish these other things, or not accomplish them. We still don't know if we got the financing. We still don't know if we got the gas marking contracts or the solid fuel contracts. But for you to say no, that needs to be through an interlocal agreement, in my opinion, not the resolution. And I think that, based on the commitment I'm getting from Shane, this is, this is where we're aligned. We don't want outside county trash. We don't. We want about 35% of what's generated inside Rutherford County. Commissioner Pierce, he said, would you consider taking the county's trash? We would love to take the county's trash. If we can do a scenario where the northern transfer station takes northern county trash and the southern, this goes all the way back to the GBB report that was done collaboratively and in partnership with one another to come up with the maximal flexible system where we could limit the amount of trucks having to go all the way north, or trucks coming north all the way south. So it's in good faith that we are trying to do this. So this resolution just is not, this has to get done before TDEC. And to try to throw additional provisions on it, I think there's just better ways to do it, Commissioner P. That's my opinion.
And again, I want to repeat, I'm not trying to stop this, but, you know, to me, either delaying this month, and the reason I'm standing up here and asking you, I want to know which would be the easiest for y'all, the best for you, to delay this for a month, to give you a chance to address this, and to say, hey, yeah, we're open to an intergovernment agreement between Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. But I'm not willing to give up us being able to say no to outside trash. Now, that's the bottom line. Now, I'm willing to offer this as a contingency. If the other motion doesn't pass, or if it's withdrawn, that we let it pass as it is with the contingency that we have an interlocal agreement. Now, I'd be good with that, because that assures us, that assures us then that we're all acting in good faith, and that we can say no, you could say no, we can come to an agreement between us here, and I don't think there's a problem with that.
We've already delayed it a month, so this will be delayed another month. And so the interlocal agreement wasn't brought forward the first time, and maybe I could have had some opportunity to fix it. But at this point, all I can give you is my good faith and honest kind of commitment that we would move forward with this with the city and try to come up with an ILA.
Darren, and I believe you, you know, I'm not saying I don't. It's just that I've learned the hard way that I've got to have something in writing. Personally, and I'll go back to our attorney, if we pass this contingent upon there being an interlocal agreement that would allow Rutherford County to negotiate who could bring trash into this county or not, would that delay their process and let them go forward to?
It may. It may delay it. TDEC may say, well, where's the interlocal agreement? You don't have it in place yet, and so we're not ready to hear the application. That's a possibility. And I, and I guess it'd be disingenuous to say that, as all of us sit here today, we know what should all be in that interlocal agreement, because there may be other things that need to be negotiated that don't just pertain to this southern transfer station's last waste processing facility.
I understand. Mayor Carr, did you have a point?
Mr. Chairman, I've been trying to talk on this. I've had my hand raised.
I'm sorry, Commissioner. I apologize. If you would, make your comments.
The only thing I was going to do is I was going to ask Darren Gore. Darren, are you part of the Southern, of the Solid Waste Regional Board? You are. So did y'all not vote to limit trash coming in from the, just to the regional?
Yes.
Did you go to court and try to uphold that?
Yes.
Okay, so very much, that's, that right there tells us that we are limiting the trash coming in. Would that be correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I apologize. Mayor Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but on the issue of an interlocal agreement, no less than eight members of this commission have requested from me from time to time, either through committee or the county commission meeting, that I meet directly and negotiate with the City of Murfreesboro to find a common sense solution for our entire community. You've asked me to do that over the course of the last year. I have done that. I've done that repeatedly. We've done that often. I've met with Mr. Gore, I've met with Craig Tyndall, the city manager, and I've met with Mayor Shane McFarland and some of the city council members repeatedly and often. I say that because when we consummate an agreement, it'll require an interlocal agreement, just as Chairman P. has outlined. And so there will be an interlocal agreement regarding their transfer station and their process station and our transfer station because of our need for their water and city sewer services across the river. That'll also be a part of that interlocal agreement that is necessary for our solution for a transfer station. I imagine that it'll either be a comprehensive interlocal agreement crafted between the attorneys of Mr. Christensen and the city attorneys and ratified by this body, or it'll be a series of interlocal agreements crafted by Mr. Christensen and the city attorneys and ratified by this body. But in any case, there has to be, and there will be, an interlocal agreement with regard to the mutual agreement that this body has required of me on repeated occasion. And so this is that first step that Mr. Gore's outlined that gets us to that point. We have had really, really good, productive, and positive conversations. As a matter of fact, anecdotally, I've heard from a number of people, both within the county commission and outside the county commission, that the relationship between the county and the Murfreesboro is the best it's been in years. And I applaud you for that and our efforts for that. And so I think it's incumbent on us to take Mr. Gore, Mr. Tyndall, and Mr. McFarland at their word. I've got every reason to believe that they're going to do everything they can to fulfill the obligations to take Rutherford County trash first. And I would remind you that Rutherford County today, not two years from now when it comes online, or three, or five, or eight years from now, but today, according to TDEC, Rutherford County produces 460,000 tons of trash a year. Ladies and gentlemen, there's plenty of trash for everybody. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Have a motion-- Have a motion to table depending upon an agreement with the city of Murfreesboro on outside the county trash. Did I not say that right?
I didn't. I didn't make that amendment.
Why didn't you, Commissioner Irwin?
Well, I think, I think that he just said we would delay.
Robert, Commissioner Irwin, would you restate your motion, please?
It's a simple motion to defer this to next meeting for the reasons outlined by Commissioner Chairman P, which I'll now defer to so that he can elaborate further on his specific concerns.
Commissioner P.
Again, you know, we're asking for a thirty-day delay so that we can ensure that we have the right to say no to outside trash. That's what I'm asking for. So I've tried to find another way to do this. To me, this is probably the best way to do it. And I'm not trying to take anything, I think Darren is sincere. I think Murfreesboro City is sincere, but I think that they overlook the fact that we need some assurances. We've taken things for granted in the past, and we don't need to do that now. Thank you.
You have the floor, Mr. Chairman. You have the floor. Do you have something to say? Commissioner Dodd.
Thank you, Chairman. I would just like to suggest, if this is going to a vote, this commissioner's voting no on the deferment. And I suggest that this resolution and Mr. P's genuine, critical component are on parallel, but separate paths. We are going to get to both. I declare, this commissioner's no vote on this and a yes vote on the resolution is not negating the opportunity to limit trash as we negotiate together in the future. This commissioner's opinion.
Hold on, you guys. Commissioner Anthony Johnson.
When I was on the commission many years ago, I've been gone twelve, I've just finished up the first year back. This problem existed then. It's been talked about for years, then it wasn't talked about or didn't seem to be. Then it picked back up, and it got strong in the last year or two, maybe a little longer. But we all know we have to do something about this trash. We all should know by now, the transfer station has nothing to do with this biogas deal. They're separate. It's already been chosen to put the transfer station at Butler Road. I don't know if it's completely been approved, but it's coming. City of Murfreesboro can do that without our permission. They can bring the trash in from anywhere without our permission. If you don't have the biogas, then you've got a transfer station with all this trash coming through the city from wherever. It may all just be coming from Rutherford County, but it's coming on our streets. People says, okay, they don't want the roads torn up. Well, they're going to be torn up. They're being torn up now by so many trucks. They don't want the smell. You'll still have even more smell if you don't have the biogas, then you're going to be taking the trash to the transfer station, then you're going to bail it, separate it, whatever, and then haul it back across the streets again. You're going to tear up the streets even worse. You're going to have more smell than just the trucks going in. The biogas, if it works out, will be a solution to that. There are many steps that we're trying to take and will have to take to fix the whole problem. This is just one of many. But as y'all know, as you all know, Murfreesboro's had the lawsuit about limiting, I think it was to limit the intake of trash from other counties, primarily, I think, Nashville. Well, we've been talking about our transfer station. We've approved the funding for it. But we're also talking about bringing in other trash to make it pay for itself. We're not talking about metro trash, but we, it has been discussed, Commissioner Piercey.
It's been discussed that you try to take commercial trash within the county.
Commissioner Johnson has the floor.
He doesn't need to call on Commissioner Piercey.
We haven't decided anything on that, as I was going to say, but it's been discussed, and anyone keeping up with it knows that. Like I said, this is just another step. If we stop this tonight, it's just, as many people have said, you're kicking the can down the road again, and that's what's happened. That's why we don't have a solution now. Trash is not going away. The trash is here. Like the mayor just said, the trash is here. You're not going to have to go outside the county for the Murfreesboro Transfer Station and for the biogas. The trash is here. So voting no on this tonight is not going to fix the problem. It's going to delay it, and it'll continue to get worse.
Mr. Piercey? Do you have a comment?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Beverly.
We've gotten in the weeds. They've come to us last month with a resolution asking for our approval. We sent it back to committee with a request. They've honored that request, and now we're considering deferring it once more. Where does it stop? You have a municipality that is a partner with us in this county that is trying to do something, and we keep saying, thank you, we need something else. I'm against deferment, and the folks in my district are against this project, and I'm going to reflect that. But they have done what we ask, and we owe them a decision tonight on whether or not they can move forward or they cannot. And anything else we discussed needs to be handled, just like Nick said, in an interlocal agreement. I'll end by this saying, I call for the question.
Question has been called for. Objection? We're going to be voting on Commissioner Irwin's motion to defer. The comment in relation to the question.
My comment is relation to Commissioner Johnson making a motion to approve the resolution seconded by Commissioner Dodd. Now we have another motion. Is he going to retract his second, or do we just keep going all night? Because we've done this before, where there's five motions on the floor.
Just if I could, I think as the posture currently stands, we're okay. It's correct. You had the pending resolution that was brought before the body, as you just stated, Commissioner, and then Commissioner Irwin has made a motion to defer it. That motion to defer is what's pending before the body. If it passes, this item's kicked a month. If it doesn't pass, the original resolution presented by Commissioner Johnson is before the body for vote.
So if Commissioner Irwin made another motion, second motion, can someone else make a third motion and get a second? Can somebody else make another motion, and we're here till in the morning?
I can go through this. It's going to take me a while, but my knee jerk is no, because the motion that was brought by Commissioner Irwin is a different type of motion. It's either called an incidental or subsidiary motion. At any rate, it is properly before the body, and it deals with whether we're deciding the issue tonight or later.
The question has been called, we're voting, okay? Everybody aboard with that? The motion is to defer for a month. We're going to be on the board for this. If you would, commissioners, please cast your vote. Anybody have a question on what you're voting for?
Yes. Excuse me, point of order. He called for the question, which means ending debate. That means the body needs to vote whether they want to end debate.
That's, well, yes, but the chairman asked if anybody had an objection. Sometimes in order to efficiently move through business, a method that can be used by a chairman is to see if anybody has an objection to just continuing on instead of doing a formal vote, and nobody voiced an objection. And so that was an indication of an implied sort of, yeah, we're okay with it, we're going to move forward and end debate. Thank you, though. Thank you.
Once again, we're going to be on the board. The motion is to defer. Correct? Commissioner Irwin? If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Five yes, fifteen no.
Motion fails. We're back to the original motion to approve the resolution presented by Chairman Johnson. Any other discussion? Question has been called for, any objection? Want to be on the board? Commissioners, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Fourteen yes, six no.
Motion passes. Item J 58 is adopted. Thank you, commissioners. Let me just say, I apologize sometimes if I don't follow the rules. My objective is for us to get the information out and for us to make a decision, an intelligent decision. And if I don't follow 100% of the rules, I would assume that you would correct me, and I appreciate you doing that. Anybody want to take a break? Five minutes, or keep going? Five minutes. I want to call the Rutherford County Commission back into session, please. Next on our agenda is item K, Other Business. We have item K A, Resolution Regarding the Economic Impact for Stewart's Landing Development Area. Let me give you a little background on this. This was presented before Property Management. Property Management considered it and passed it forward to our budget committee with a positive recommendation. The budget committee met last week, discussed it. There was a motion to approve. The motion failed by a three to three vote. There was another motion to forward it on without a recommendation. That motion also failed three to three, so it was not on our agenda under budget. Commissioner Anthony Johnson of Smyrna has asked that it be put back on the agenda for consideration, and it is on our agenda for consideration. And Commissioner Johnson will read the resolution. Before he reads the resolution, without objection, I would ask that the representatives from Stewart's Landing be allowed to make their presentation, and then Commissioner Johnson can lead us through the resolution process. Without objection? Okay. Call your people up. At this time, I'd like to call up Brian Hercules from the city of Smyrna and all other presenters. And Brian, you can introduce everybody.
Thank you for coming.
First of all, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I'm Mary Esther Reed. I'm the mayor in the town of Smyrna, and I will tell you, we will all be brief, because I know I have sat in your position before, and I know people are ready to go home. But I want to tell you how excited we are at the town of Smyrna about this project. This is a project that's been a long time for the town of Smyrna. We've been holding on to this property for about thirty years. We've been holding on to this property because we wanted just the right project. And we feel like that this is the right project that you have in front of you tonight. Stewart's Landing's a great mixed use of retail, commercial and residential. It's a destination development for the town of Smyrna and for Rutherford County. Our council and our citizens are excited. I can't tell you how many people that we've had that have talked to us about this project and what it's going to offer for our community. Our council understands the positive economic impact of the property tax as well as the sales tax revenue. And on behalf of myself and the town council who are here with me tonight, if you guys will stand, just so you can prove that you are here, we would appreciate you all voting to approve our project tonight. Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Paul Latour, the president of the Rutherford County Chamber.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, good evening. I too will be brief, and she's going to, of course, has said a lot of things that I was going to say, but I can tell you from the chamber's perspective and from the Economic Development Department, this is a project that, as she said, has been long overdue. We have talked to several developers over time. This is a project that is a good project for Smyrna. It's a good project for the county, and frankly, it's a good project for the region, as the mayor said, it will have some regional draw. Although it's not the size or scale of the avenue, I think it's very similar in many ways. And you can see certainly the economic benefits that that has had from a sales tax perspective, along with property tax and others. So it's had a great and tremendous economic impact. We were fortunate enough to find a partner, and we worked with the town of Smyrna on doing that. The developer is a top-notch developer. We have every faith in him and their group that they will do what they say they're going to do. And so we are very excited and look forward to answering any more questions. And of course, I would also urge your approval for that tonight as we move forward with the TIF district. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add one or two things. I'm not going to keep you long either. I know it's been a long night. One of the, a couple of things that's been asked about is some of the things we did to protect this TIF as far as the property and those kind of things. So as everybody understands the TIF, the TIF is a performance-based incentive. If they don't do anything, they don't get anything. We're not putting any money in this thing on the front end. So we'll set the baseline at the sale price of the property, and we'll begin to immediately resolve back to the county and to the city the taxes based on that amount. Those will go forward. Then we'll also be asking, and will be approved in the TIF for the debt service, which is, I think, 21% for the county, a little less than 2% for the town. From there, as they build on this property and businesses and buildings come on board, then that will be an increase in the tax, and that's where they'll get their incentive in that offset between the baseline and the new value. The other thing that we did that we felt very important for us, as the mayor talked about, this is a piece of property we've had for over thirty years, and we had a real specific vision for what we wanted there. This project came in as a PUD. No matter what happens going forward, whether this developer completes the project, which we have full faith they will, but if for some reason there was a sale of the property, the PUD follows the property, does not follow the developer. So anything that's on this PUD today, from the hotels, the retail, the condominiums, the restaurants, those type of things, those all still have to be put on that property according to the PUD by anyone else going forward. The only way they could make any changes to that would be come back through the planning department at the town of Smyrna. So I just wanted to make a couple of initial just comments about that. At this time, I'd like to ask Dominic Zabriski. I want to make sure I said that right. He is a partner with our developer, and he's going to just cover a couple of things about the development.
Thank you, Brian. Once again, my name is Dominic Zabriski. I'm with Equitable Property Company. My partner and I want to thank Brian and the mayor Reed, as well as the town of Smyrna, for their support and guidance during the last twelve months or so we've been working through the town of Smyrna to really plan and design a walkable town center to attract retail and office tenants that will continue to support the growth that Smyrna's seeing. Faced with rising interest rates and construction costs, it was Faced with rising interest rates and construction costs, it was determined that a TIF is necessary to support the construction of the infrastructure of this project. All TIF funding would be used solely for the improvements that would be dedicated to the town of Smyrna once completed, as well as some other off-site improvements that will be required by the Tennessee Department of Transportation. When fully developed, this project is expected to create over 1,800 new jobs and generate over $60 million in sales tax revenue over the TIF's 20-year period. Thank you for your time tonight and appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like previous speakers have said, this property has sat there for 30 years. Nothing happening, no tax money. From day one, once it sells, you get tax money. That's a win. Have upper-scale development in Smyrna, that's a win. People have been asking for upper-scale stores, upper-scale apartments, or townhomes. That's what you get with this. It's a win. Every shovel they put in the ground out there increases the tax base. That's a win. We can talk about hypotheticals to try to find things that are going to be a loss, but I don't deal in hypotheticals. It's the facts. Smyrna has presented the facts. We have enough facts for me to vote yes on this. But I have this resolution before me, and I'll read it. It's longer than the other ones, so bear with me. Resolution Regarding Economic Impact Plan for Stewart's Landing Development Area. Whereas the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County, the Board, is a public nonprofit corporation organized and existing under, and by virtue of the provisions of Chapter 53, Title VII, Tennessee Code Annotated, as amended the Act. Whereas the purpose of said Act, as stated herein, being to authorize an incorporation in the several municipalities in the state of Tennessee of public cooperation to finance, acquire, construct, own, lease... Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I'm being distracted up here. I don't know what it is, but I'm hearing something, and I would appreciate it if that would stop. Where was I? Whereas the Board desires to induce Equity Property Company, LLC, and its affiliates, the company, to undertake a development, the development, in the Stewart's Landing Development Area, being certain property located at 2050 Motlow College Boulevard, Smyrna, Tennessee, which is currently anticipated to contain approximately 280,000 square feet of retail space, 245,000 square feet of office space, and 240 hotel rooms, each of which will constitute a project within the meaning of TCA 7-53-101, collectively the project, and is also expected to also include certain additional uses, such as the 75 residential condominium units, a public amphitheater, and open spaces. And whereas the company will incur substantial cost in connection with the design, construction, and installation of public infrastructure to be made and adjacent to or serving the planned area that is necessary to serve the project, the infrastructure improvements, and for such cost to be eligible to the funding with the TIF revenues, public infrastructure shall have the meaning... Oh, I lost my place. Public infrastructure shall have the meaning given to such term in TCA 9-23-10216, which includes roads, streets, publicly owned and privately owned parking lots, facilities or garages, traffic signals, sidewalks, and other public improvements that are available for public use, utility improvements, and stormwater and drainage improvements, whether or not located on public property or publicly dedicated easement. And whereas the Board is authorized by the Act to, among other things, prepare and submit to the town of Smyrna, to the town council of the town of Smyrna, Tennessee, the town, and to the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for their approval an economic impact plan pursuant to Section 312 of the Act. And whereas the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County, economic development plan for the Stewart's Landing Development Area, the plan attached herein to Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference, and approve the plan pursuant to which the Board would receive certain property taxes allocated to the Board pursuant to Section 312H of the Act, and the plan, the TIF revenues. And use the same for an incentive, the incentive to the company by using a portion of the TIF revenues each year, either to pay or reimburse the company for paying a portion of the eligible cost, such term and all other terms, the initial letter of which are capitalized ... excuse me, and is not otherwise defined herein, shall have the meaning ascribed thereto in the plan of the infrastructure improvements and initiation expenses, or to provide financial assistance to the fund, the portion of the eligible cost, and the initiation expenses by borrowing money under a nonrecourse note, and providing the proceeds therefore or thereof of the company to reimburse it for the otherwise financial and eligible cost of the initiation expenses. And whereas the Board is authorized by law and has deemed it necessary to provide the incentive pursuant to the terms of the certain funding agreement, the funding agreement to be entered into with the company. And whereas the county has been asked to approve the plan and incentive to the company, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, as follows. Section 1. Binding with respect to the project...
Commissioner Johnson? We've just been given approval by the county attorney. You can skip down to item 7 if you want to. Section 7.
Okay, section 7. It's hot up here. The resolution shall be effective immediately. The public welfare and the welfare of the county requiring it, approved and adopted by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners on the 12th day of October 2023. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're open for discussion. We're going to be on the board for this.
If you know that I'm a little slow getting up nowadays, but that knee surgery slowed me down a bit. I voted in favor of this at budget, but the reason I stood up here is I want to make a point, and here's my point. We just gave a 26-cent tax increase to our citizens. This money that we're spending here is our citizens' money. Now, the people we're giving this money to are developers. I know a lot of developers, like a lot of them. Some of them think the same way I do, but too many of them have fought us time after time when we've tried to find alternatives to property tax at the state level. While I'm here standing up, and the reason I'm standing up and saying this is I want to request that our development community turn around and give us the same opportunity that our municipalities have, and I'll also ask that of the chamber, and I'll also ask that of the other municipalities to help lobby our legislators to give Rutherford County the same opportunities to impose impact fees or whatever, the same as municipalities have. Now, there are consequences to actions. We all realize that, but I'm telling you that I'm not in the mood to be giving a lot of money to developers.
Other comments? Commissioner Irwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few comments. From the budget meeting, it became fairly clear that the investment in this project might be $215 million, or it might not be, depending on whether they get financing and a whole bunch of documents that aren't not currently in place, in place eventually. The only milestone the developer has to meet is to get started by a certain date. There's no additional milestones, no clawbacks. We could have the same situation that we have over at One Church. There are no clawbacks. The additional tax revenue, as the gentleman confirmed in Budget Committee, if it's developed, may be $25 million over 20 years, but the county would only get about $5 million of that over those 20 years, which would be about $261,000 per year to the county if it's fully developed. And the difference, as Chairman P., among others, have pointed out, would go to the developers to pay for their infrastructure costs for the project. And to follow on to what Chairman P. said, and if the commission is going to continue giving away tax revenue, how is the commission going to make up the revenue it's giving away? Now, we've heard that, according to a younger study, there are some really big economic benefits that result from the TIF. But I want to, I'm going to suggest that you ask yourself, if it's that good, do you really need a TIF? With all that in mind, Mr. Chairman and fellow members of the commission, I don't think this is a good use of the county's resources at this point in time. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Question.
Yes, Commissioner Piercy.
Thank you. When the avenue was built, or Stones River Mall was built, was this extended to those two developments?
Not to my knowledge.
Do you know why?
Don't ask.
Is that all you got?
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dodd?
Thank you. $5 million over the course of five years is the first comment. Currently, I believe that land has made us $0 in the last 30 years. I think that's the correct math. Also, the investment will be used by developers, by professionals, to professionally design, engineer, and build, and bond, infrastructure that the citizens get back. So to me, it's like we're planning ahead. We're doing what we're always asked to do, build infrastructure first. We're currently getting $0. We're going to get $5 million. We're going to receive back $26 million worth of infrastructure, managed, built, bonded, designed by someone else. So this commissioner is in support of this TIF.
Mr. Beverly?
Thank you. Let's talk a little bit about alternatives. 30 years they've had this property, probably entertained offers to sell it plenty of times. What's popular on the north end of the county right now is apartment complexes. With apartments come families, families come kids for school. Put an increase of 1,000 kids up on the north end's education system, what we're going to need for schools, the buildings, and the cost to educate those kids will easily topple $10 million a year. We already have $600 million. We're looking at over the next four. Let's be very, very smart about what we're going to do, because I can guarantee you, if this fails, there's a high likelihood that this project is going to be sold and our control over any of it is gone.
Mr. Chairman, I believe if it's...
I'm sorry, Commissioner Irwin?
I believe it's going to be sold until we lose control anyway, and they can correct that, but I believe it would be sold. That's what they told us the other night in budget. Right, but that's just, that's the zoning and things along those lines. They're referring to it's in a PUD, meaning that's where the zoning is, et cetera. But if it's sold, then the developer owns it, is what we were told in budget.
I know you weren't prepared to speak, but I'm glad you are. So a couple of corrections. Number one, Mr. Hercules, is this piece of property City of Smyrna property? Currently, is the county collecting any property taxes on this property? Was that a no, sir? Thank you. So there is no county property taxes being assessed on this property? So the assumption that we're losing revenue as a result of this project would be incorrect. So this would be a net gain, I think, as Mr. Beverly has said, to the county because there is no risk, financial risk, to the county with the City of Smyrna moving forward with this project. The county of Rutherford is not at financial risk in any way. Thank you, Mayor Carr. Anyone else? Or, sorry, Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to point out, first of all, what the mayor said and Chairman Dodd, I just wanted to go and say those were wonderful comments. I absolutely concur with those. This commissioner is a yes. The people in District 10 are a yes. They're excited about this. Hotel motel tax, sales tax, property tax, commercial developments, and most industrial development boards, if they saw a $5.98 to $1 benefit to cost ratio, would say this is the kind of projects we are looking for in Rutherford County to produce revenue that is sorely needed. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson? Anyone else? I'm sorry, Commissioner Johnson, I keep looking at the back of your head. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know I've got a big head, but... I understand people saying, why are we going to give this money away? I'm 72 years old. When I was six or seven, sitting at the kitchen table with my dad, and he was old school, he said naught from naught is naught. And that's what we have. That's what we have. Zero, naught. Zero, naught. We can have a lot more. This will help build schools. We're going to build the infrastructure. You don't have to worry about that. The county or Smyrna doesn't have to worry about that. TDOT's requiring a lot of infrastructure down there to get people in and out and so traffic flows. They're on top of it. We don't have a problem there. But we have had zero, and probably actually some cost to City of, the Town of Smyrna, over 30 years just to keep up the property. Not extensive, but at least it was some cost to them. We've received nothing. We could receive, by turning this down, the requirement to build another school, because like they said, they could have sold it 10 or 15 times to somebody for apartments. They didn't do that. They wanted a good place for the citizens of Smyrna, and I'm one of them. Been there 72 years, well, almost, because I was gone for two years in the Army, but they say I've been there all my life. I enjoy living in Smyrna. I'm proud of Smyrna, and I want to continue to be proud of Smyrna. This will make me more proud of Smyrna. It's a good opportunity. With interest rates of what they are today, how many people are going to go out there without some incentive to build on a pile of rock that they've got to dig down 25 feet, a tremendous cost? Got to dig down 25 feet for, I think it was drainage. It has to be done. That's a tremendous cost. We're helping with that, hopefully. But there's so many pluses with this. It's just a good project. It's a great project, and I urge you, for the sake of the county and the sake of Smyrna, to approve this tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Ready for the question? For this, commissioners will be on the Board. Would please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
17 yes, 2 no.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just add a quick comment on this if I could. The way I've looked at this project in Smyrna is that there are other communities that have a sense of community. Smyrna, their old Main Street is not a place to gather. This would become a place to gather and offer a sense of community for Smyrna, much the same as Market Square has in Knoxville, Tennessee, a place for people to gather and have a sense of community. And that's the way I looked at this project, and it would be an asset to the people of Smyrna, which will ultimately be an asset to the people of Rutherford County. So thank you. Our next meeting is scheduled for November the 16th. I'll also remind commissioners, next month, have your Christmas best on. Our OIT department will be taking a video of us wishing the community a very Merry Christmas. And if we're going to get into our executive session, but before we do that, I'd like to ask for your shout-outs tonight. Anyone have any? Commissioner Rather.
I finally got up first. This is a shout-out with a comment. Most of you know, you know, we try to keep family stuff within the family, but this last weekend, it went statewide and far beyond to those states. Just to let you know, my daughter's home safe. She's fine. Same little girl. Some reason, her and another girl, side tech road trip, I'm not telling anybody, but anyway, my wife's phone and my phone were blowing up, and we were focused on one thing and one thing only, and that was not returning phone calls and texts. So I'm not apologizing, I'm just saying, my wife and I went to Hades and back in three So again, we were focused on one thing. The shout-out part of this is, everybody knows Denise Martin, right? I had no idea her daughter is detective. Is that right? Trina, Katrina, they call her Trina. Katrina Martin. Detective Sergeant Joseph Duncan and Detective Mandy McPherson were at my house for hours and hours and hours. I think they left around 2:00 in the morning. Laptops, phones, calling. My shout-out, because once again, I saw our law enforcement in Rutherford County in action, and I think we're the best in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rather. Commissioner Oliver.
I'm just going to say this. I'm just praising God that she was found safely, because I was praying real hard. And when I found her, she was okay. I was just rejoicing. But I rise to say that it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and thoughts and prayers to families that are dealing with breast cancer and that have lost loved ones. I actually had to funeralize one of my best friends this past weekend due to breast cancer. So prayers and thoughts to those that are dealing with breast cancer.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliver. Commissioner Dodd.
Yeah, I sent out an email. Shannon Woodfin Parsons reached out to me this week. Woodfin's Chapel is going to have their 130th year celebration as a family-owned business, and they've asked the community to come out and join them at Woodfin's Chapel on Last Castas Highway here in Murfreesboro, and it is this Sunday, October 15th, 4:00 p.m., under the big tent next to the chapel. Special speaker, music, and food by the alley on Main Street. So please join us.
Thank you, Commissioner Dodd. Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Chairman. Just real quick, just a big shout-out to Carolyn Saber here from Stewart's Creek High School. She made it through this entire county commission meeting tonight and all the discussions. And when young people want to come check out how local government works, I'm telling you all, that is the most awesome thing of doing this. All of our discussions are about the future, revenue for the future, schools for the future, leaving it better than we found it. I just want to encourage any young people, any of the high schools, contact your commissioner, come out here, check it out, meet, find out what's going on, talk to the commissioners, and get involved, because we're doing all of this for the future. Thank you for taking the time to come and learn.
Commissioner Beverly.
Thank you. Like Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and pink tie for sure. It is, forgive me, I want to make sure I word this correctly. It is Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month, and this is something that affects many, many members of our community, and just something to keep them in mind as they go through the grieving process of losing a small child. I want to keep them in our thoughts and prayers, especially in this month, and bring awareness. I also want to announce our second District 6 Community Forum. It will be on August 30th, or August, I'm sorry, October 30th of this year at 6:00 at Crossway Baptist down off Shoville Pike. So we'd love to have everybody out. We will have myself, our road board rep, Michael Shirley, and our school board rep, Caleb Tedwell, there for a short presentation, and then Q and A after.
Thank you, Commissioner Beverly. Commissioner Reed.
Today is National Farmers' Day. Now, I know some of you may not realize that because you're not in the middle of it, but today I actually participated in National Farmers' Day Parade in Rockvale. I happened to pull out on Highway 99 as they were moving a large combine, and there was a lot of people participated in that parade, but they didn't necessarily sign up for it because of Highway 99 being a two-lane road, and we were trying to get to Veterans Parkway. We followed that combine all the way, and it was quite interesting due to the fact that a lot of them had Florida tags, California tags, New York tags, Coffee County tags, and Bedford County tags, and a lot of them was in that line, and it looked sort of like a NASCAR race getting ready to start, as each one of them jockeyed for position, but they couldn't go anywhere. So we followed that farmer all the way down to Veterans Parkway, and I really enjoyed it, because it gave an opportunity for people to realize the importance of farmers in Rutherford County. That gentleman was in the process of doing his job of raising the food and fiber for people of Rutherford County as well as this country. And if we don't realize it, that these individuals who are still out here in Rutherford County, especially in my district, we still grow a lot of corn, a lot of soybeans, we still have cotton right here in Rutherford County. And I just want to give a shout-out to those farmers who are still out there every day in all kinds of weather, raising the crops of this country. So today is National Farmers' Day, and every time you take a bite, think a farmer.
Commissioner McMurray.
I just want to do a follow-up. I wish Ms. Susan Allen was here, but she made a challenge to us all of trying to hold a town hall, so I'm echoing Commissioner Beverly. So on November the 6th, myself and this fellow here, and along with one of our school board members, we're going to be holding a town hall at the Blackman Community Center on November 6th at 6:00 p.m. So we'll get some information out. So we're just trying to, you know, update our constituents once or twice a year, just to give them an update, and we challenge everyone to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to Commissioner Sereno. Not only did he have three public hearings to make a motion on tonight, but he also provided me with a Kit Kat, and it kind of got me through the middle part of our presentation tonight. But thank you, Commissioner Sereno, for doing that for us every month. I appreciate you. Anybody else? Commissioner Oliver.
One more that I totally forgot. It is National Dental Hygienist Month. As a registered dental hygienist, and like you said, when you think of a farmer, when you take a bite, after you take that bite, brush, flush, and rinse.
At this time, we will retire. We go into recess for our executive session, so I'll ask the courtroom to be cleared with the exception of our attorneys, our attorney and commissioners, and Mayor Carr.